Today's session, January ninth, twenty twenty four is called Order. Donna, can you do a roll call, please?
I will. Councilmember Blush.
Here.
Councilmember Sherman.
Here.
Councilmember Gutierrez.
Here.
Mayor Nesko.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Schmidt.
Here.
Councilmember Sterns.
Here.
And Councilmember Gilmore.
Here.
Thank you, Donna.
You're welcome.
All right, tonight on our study agenda, Public Works Director Jay Harris has capital project manager Aaron Nix has updates for us about capital improvement plans. Plan.
Plans.
Yeah.
We have a few plans. Good evening, Mayor, Council. Jay Harris, your Public Works Director. I'm here with Aaron Nix. He's our capital, uh, public works project manager and Aaron's busy guy right now. I'm busy. I think Aaron's busy year ago. So, uh, we're gonna go through this brief slideshow of our, our plans for the year and, uh, existing or older councilors have probably heard some of this before and, uh, and then we'll be open for some questions along the way. Um, if someone comes up, uh, just chat with us, okay? So, uh, recent completed project, yeah, first slide there. So, uh, Rockdale paving, um, got that done last summer. And, uh, it was getting pretty rutted. Uh, the road surface definitely needed to, uh, uh, be reconditioned. So you can see the after down below there. Uh, that was used in federal funds. And, uh, I don't know if you guys know a lot about government projects, but federal funds is the worst part of money. Cause there's so many requirements that go along with the federal funds and the cost of the job wasn't worth the reporting we had to do. Um, cause it was like three hundred thousand dollars. But by the time we got the design and all the reporting and everything in, we spent a lot of money to go pre-brought in. But it turned out good. So it was one of those fifty fifty projects, uh, where it was fifty percent grant funded, fifty percent city minded funded. So it was better than a hundred percent city money, right? Uh, Western Gateway, um, before and after, uh, most of you folks probably drive that a lot. That was a really successful project. And then C Street Landville, um, before and then after, um, landfill been used, uh, in the thirties. It closed in the late eighties, I think, something like that.
Well, never technically close, sounds.
We closed. Yeah. But you didn't hear it quite easy then. And so that was an interesting project. And, uh, that was grant funded from the Department of Ecology. Thank goodness because, uh, it was a tremendously expensive job. So we got that work compliance down with the state. That was a great project, but that was one of those that been hanging around for a while. Um, so then Aaron's doing the odd slides. Aaron.
Thank you. Um, hi, Councilors here. Appreciate your time here. Um, AMI project is basically. How many connections do we have? Twenty nine hundred?
Uh, thirty, uh, three, three, thirty-eight hundred and thirty-nine meters.
Got it. So part of this project is we had old infrastructure, old meters that have been in place. Typically, the registers on those things, the, the battery lasts ten years. Um, and we have basically, uh, elected to go to new, new metering. The problem with the, the older meters is they get a little bit less accurate as they get older, as the batteries die off. The other benefit is, is the new meters themselves, I think, believe they have a twenty year battery life. So we will be saving a lot of money. The other benefit in that, you can look at this two, two ways, I guess. As, as the water utility, if, um, there's better accuracy, it's gonna help us as far as revenue, it's expensive, right? So what people see, the tendency and we're not alone, other jurisdictions experiences, when you do a massive transfer like this, sometimes revenues bump, bump up a little bit. Just because they're better meter. Our intent is we've purchased all of the meters. Um, what we'd like to do is we purchased meters, boxes, all the elements that we need to do a complete swap out. Um, we just purchased the last four hundred or so, um, units themselves. Now we're about ready to go to bid to have a contractor come in and do a lot of the work for us as far as doing those.
This budget is our remaining budget for a while. Uh, the parts on this project were expensive. Been talking to council a couple of years about this project. Um, because of the Houston instrument chip shortage, we couldn't get the transmitters or meters. They're just coming online. Census is a global company and, uh, was it Texas, Tex- Texas Instruments? I see it's, it's Texas. Yes, that's, that's maybe, right? I was close. Anyways, uh, so, uh, we are getting the rest of the transmitters. Um, so we'll have a complete package. It's all down at our yard, um, for a contractor to come install. Um, or hopefully get most of them done for all of that. A city is self performed, some meter installs already. Um, we're, we're four or five hundred done now. We're giving you folks an update. And so we've been into it. It's just, it's hard with our maintenance guys are reading meters, they're mowing grass during the summer. They're doing all sorts of things. And now you gotta go try to swap out twenty meters one week. And it's just, it's just tough getting that all done. So it's gonna be good to get a contractor out to do that. And, um, so the system though too is.
That was.
You're, you're talking about what the system is gonna do, the drive bys.
So currently, uh, the way that we are doing. Yep, we're correct.
Let's see every way.
That means sending individual out there to read every single individual meter. The benefit of this, and there will be another component to this project once we get the new meters in. Installation of an antenna on a high, high point here in the city with the intent, and this is really exciting for us. Most utilities are at that level already, the ability to monitor water flow online. The, uh, phone lines. So that's the other benefit with that is traditionally, if you're doing, um, you're just eyeballing and reading things. The software actually provides the benefit in the sense that it will tell you if there's a potential leak that's going on, if they see a significant increase. The benefit with this product as well as what we're taking on, that we'll be able to see every time. As opposed to typically, they come back, they're worked, they gotta go through all the motions and they get back. So it's really gonna help our citizens too as well. So.
And so it will, and no, if it accounts, no swabs running in the middle of night, all the time, every night. That's toilet leaking, right? One of those a lot of houses have them. Um, that adds up to a lot of water every year. And so, uh, a lot of times the meters are gonna be more accurate and read better and read accurately. The meters right now are reading a little lower and, uh, but we're going to be getting to the customers and talking to them about leaks and that sort of thing. And so in the end, consumption will probably drop a little bit because of the better leak detection and all that. And so a person, if, if they have a high water bill, the, this is a year or so out, people go online and look at their usage. Um, we also with the AM, uh, AMR and, or the fixed base antenna, um, if a person needs a reading, the utility council can sit out six couple of minutes to get it back. But, uh, we don't have to send somebody right now. They call them on the radio up there. They draw up what they're doing. They'll get the reading. Call them back on the radio. And so, uh, it's gonna improve customer service immensely. But, uh, phase one is just drive by. So we're lifting the lids right now. Um, we're having the, the handhelds. Um, and with the five hundred we have in already, we're already doing drive by and picking up those readings. And then, uh, the next step would be getting the antenna up on the reservoir and then go to the fixed base read. And then if for some reason we have antenna problems in the future or a console problem here, we still have the option to try by self, right? So we'll have, and then we have the option to open them all again too. So, uh, we'll have multiple ways, uh, to read people's meters.
So instead of individually going in and reading, all they need to do is drive by and the computer picks it up and sending out a reading. And then it's a lot easier than going house to house. So.
I believe it's two weeks or we're committing ten workdays for meter range right now. I believe that water department and essentially.
Yeah, that's two P T generally. Yeah. We're gonna gain enough to eat back for the most part that can go and work on other things. So, uh, so you're spending money to save money and improving the meter system that is very age old, right?
This, this was budgeted a couple of years ago, like a one point eight million, right? And there was, wasn't there more grant funds than eight hundred thousand? I thought there was more.
No, uh, that was our, our money that was put in.
We self-funded and then we added our.
Okay.
But it was one point, it's one point eight million dollar project and.
Yep.
Yep. And already been improved and shows issues.
Yeah, sorry. I guess we need to leave them that. Again, this is a, this is a project that was done. The purchases have been, you know, made, if you will. We haven't seen all of the product is.
It's supposed to be shipped.
Shipping. So this is kind of in process. Since it's something that we're asking for a decision on or will be coming to you later for direction. This is just information for us. Fill you in on the project itself, give you an update, let them know, you know, what's, what's going on and maybe. This is an update incrementally as we move along the process. Take that you'll see throughout the video.
We hope to, and that he's filled out and get moving the next.
This is trying to get out.
Complete the installs.
Correct. Hopefully as budget allows that we don't have to eliminate part of the schedule or something. Um, and all depends on the bidding climate, you know, that, uh, there are vendors that do this, but they're not local, unfortunately. Typically, this is sort of especially, and so they fly crews in, they put them in motel rooms. These guys, they're, they like to turn a meter over in twenty minutes, if you can believe it, blocks and everything.
We've lost some buying power, right? Because this was budgeted a year and a half ago, two years ago, essentially, you know, probably twenty. There's a budgeting twenty five for the first time?
Uh, twenty-two. It's, it's an aging project.
Also, but buying power, we do have a, a city in Western Washington recently opened this process, correct? So.
Woodville.
Woodville. So we may get some more accurate, you know, figures and costs of like, you know, like actual installation cost.
In addition, we, I did talk to Ferguson, who is our supplier for that type of equipment. And they gave me contact of a, a gentleman from H E R Engineering that's done two or three of them recently. What I'm doing is I'm gonna kind of let him look at our cost of, and see if we're close. What do you think?
We're doing a budget check right now to make sure, are we doing the whole schedule or do we have to take a piece out and our guys didn't go do it? Do we request more budget for the project? We're sort of in that realm right now. Cause costs have gone up since our preliminary estimates, unfortunately.
Is there been any consideration about bundling this in with other capital projects? Just that are in similar geographic area. If we're gonna be paving, let's say like with the highway, we just take the front end roads, uh, and bundle them into that project to get these meters installed. Is there, is there?
Unfortunately, this particular project, you're over the whole city. Right? You're touching everywhere in the city. But we have been putting in new meters on projects when we're in a project. Yeah, uh, like Park Street, for example, that sort of thing.
Okay.
Um, that we went through and picked up a lot of those.
Did any new installation or changing out of meters that had failed or been?
Okay.
They're all new meters.
Everything from here on out.
No more brass meters. And we're done with those.
Alright.
So what do you do with the old ones?
Say.
Unfortunately, there's not any, nobody's using these brass meters anymore.
Certain amount of crap.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. So they're being, they're being stockpiled. There's a, a fault that, you know, we put out to bid on those. So they receive some. Return on that.
What area did the new ones go in? Uh, like different spots or kind of isolated to?
I think the path actually.
Kind of hard to spot. Yeah. The key is really small.
It's, they, they jump around the side.
I believe it's the green.
Yeah. Okay.
So there, it was about four hundred and fifty.
For the ones that we did.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, they, they focus kind of on the downtown, but there are some other outlining and, uh, Jay mentioned that we're, I think, other projects we should try to integrate that into.
So, uh, slide four. So, uh, well, one, the high school tank, uh, the project went up the bid, uh, council awarded, um, the, the bid. We have a, a pre-construction conference today, um, and, uh, worked with Broadlands to go over, uh, their schedule. Um, so if you look at the map on the left, we're certain all the way up at, uh, well one. And, uh, we have to dig in a pipe from well one to, to Shelton Springs. And we're replacing the, the steel line in there right now, now wood with dapple iron. And then, uh, from Shelton Springs, uh, there's a carrier pipe that's approximately twenty to twenty-four inches in diameter, varies. It's a gravity, uh, water line right now. We're using that, uh, as a, uh, carrier for the, uh, H D P E pipe. So we're fusing a twelve inch H D P pipe together. It's gonna be one big long linear pipe and they're pulling it through, um, this carrier from Shelton Springs, which is near the top there, all the way down to the high school reservoir.
Other section of K and thirteen street, Shelton Springs.
So, uh, it was tremendous amount of pipe work. Um, this project has been in the capital improvement plan since two thousand and ten comprehensive plan. And, uh, the benefits is we get a pressurized main going from well one all the way down to the high school reservoir. Whereas right now it's a gravity line and, um, it's an old gravity line. So it will, our whole system will be pressurized then, which is a really good news. So, uh, we did get grant funding, uh, from, uh, the State Department of Commerce, uh, two million fifty thousand dollars. Uh, we've also put in water rate funds, uh, towards the project. And, uh, then at, uh, at well one, uh, we're doing some upgrades to the fencing and that sort of thing there. Um, at Shelton Springs, we're doing some, uh, different valving and various work there. We're also putting in a connection because there's actual swimming pool in that building of water. And we're putting in a connection and that's our emergency water source. And, uh, it needed, uh, the goal is to put water in there also.
A reservoir. Maybe not swimming pool, a reservoir, right?
It's, well, we walk in there, it looks like sort of swimming pool when you walk in there.
Yeah.
But it is a reservoir with, uh, just a dirt bottom on it. Um, and I could take anybody there if you guys wanna go, especially as projects underway. We need to do a field trip. Uh, this is really, this is like a once in a lifetime sort of project. And then down to high school reservoir, um, that pipe, if you look at that picture on the right there, um, that pipe's getting replaced. Um, we're gonna, uh, when they're done and new fencing around the reservoir, it's gonna extend out a lot. Um, to just enclose some areas where we're having some camping issues, things. We just need to close water reservoir a little bit better. And then, uh, the paint that's on there right now, the goal is by the end of the summer is to clean the site up. So it's a little more presentable. So, uh, on that, and our city staff are actually going to, uh, clean the reservoir, probably put some paint down on the bottom of it. Um, the whole reservoir does need to be recoded in the coming years. Um, I have a reservoir options setting we're working on. This reservoir is sixties vintage. Um, I, I need, it, it's inspected fine. We inspected it fine this year, minimal rust. Um, it isn't tied down seismically though, and, um, it is showing its age. And eventually these smaller reservoirs probably need to be taken offline because the painting cost of that is probably a quarter of the cost of a new reservoir, um, especially the interior coatings. And so you've got to start looking at a lifecycle analysis and is it worth recoding this thing? Cause they're aging quicker and quicker and quicker because they're getting rustier and rustier. And is it really worth the interval? So we're gonna be looking at that because, uh, it is in the six year C I P to be recoded inside and out. We're just gonna clean it up this year. But, um, we need to talk a little more about the size of this reservoir, the age of this reservoir. And we'd better off putting in a brand new larger reservoir in other areas and taking some of these smaller ones that aren't seismic. And, uh, the O N M costs are increasing on them significantly.
I thought that was our goal to, to build there, reservoirs and get rid of all the small ones already.
As money allows, right? That, uh.
I mean, we need to build one fairly the next three years on angle side, correct? I mean.
Well, uh, we're working on that.
We're working on this. It's a key news.
Nice segue.
Yeah, it's nice segue. So jump on it.
Yeah. So, uh, keep in mind stuff in our reservoirs, we know we've been before and how we might, uh, as I mentioned, I think to the council and I think you all were upon that, that last meeting. We do have some, um, some pressures, some fire flow issues, um, some storage divisions in our angle side. Pressure zone, that's identified, the colored area through there. We do have, um, this particular project of which we rewarded about, uh, two million dollars, if I recall correctly. The intent here is what we wanna do is we have a booster pump station and it's not shown very well in your size. There's an upper angle side booster pump station that's right about here. And then there does, there is another booster pump station. We call that the lower booster pump station.
All the way down says pump station there, um, all the way at the top of the screen. It's down in the maintenance yard. So we pump water up to the angle side reservoir right now. And there's actually another booster pump station that's been constructed next to the angle side reservoir that is offline right now. And, uh, the goal is to bring that online, uh, to increase, uh, the, the storage. Uh, what happened is the houses were built around the reservoir and they're not far enough down the hill. So you can't drain all the water down the reservoir unless you run out of water pressure in the homes. And I think I've explained this a couple of times. So the pump station up there will come online and keep everyone's pressures constant. The reservoir will still draw down. And then when the demand is done, uh, the lower station will kick back on and fill the reservoir back up again. And that gives us, it takes up our deficiency in the reservoir and it also gives us about seven hundred, I'm s- yeah, seven hundred more housing, simple family housing units in that zone before we have to go build a, a new tank.
Zones large though. If you see the area blue from, uh.
That's existing.
It's existing, yeah. So it's one pressure zone, covers the entire south side of town, basically. So for, from, that would probably change.
Very likely. The, like the wastewater treatment plant down on Fairmont is in this zone. Well, this zone probably is from the three fifties in elevation all the way down to near sea level. And so, uh, it's likely that the downtown zone, which you see on the map there, which is sort of about a high school tank, is gonna extend out and get over to some of the lower areas of the city and proportion of zones out a little better. Um, because, uh, you have really low pressure at the top, really high pressure but out the bottom, right? So.
So the component, at least for this particular project with the two million dollars. Our intent here is basically we're gonna be doing a couple piping projects. We have some old A C line that's undersized that we need to upsize. That's the, that's the help with pressures. In addition, that lower booster pump station, we're probably gonna be required to put in new pumps in there to get better pressures in there as well as our systems talk via, and you know the acronym better than me, the SCADA system, which basically is it's talking to itself and it helps us manage this water system. We need to, in essence, do some upgrades to that SCADA system as well as, as, um, I'm gonna try to explain variable frequency drives. What they are basically are, it's something that attaches onto the well or the pumping station. And it is basically its own brain and it determines what, how to lower and when to rise up pressures. And it's just a better way to manage your system. Currently we don't have those in there. Uh, so that's the intent with at least with this two million dollars. It's gonna be new pumps, some new, uh, larger pipe, some, uh, scale work as well as, um, probably some computer component upgrades to the system with the intent that, um, it's gonna help us in all those areas identified before. The other thing I think is important for the council to know is that D O H, and that's our regulator, Department of Health, is tracking this issue too. And they talk to us about this. So it's important that you're aware of that. Doesn't mean we're in trouble. Just means that we got some things that we need to work on and that's what we're doing.
Well, that's why I think we should probably talk about that, that new tank. Because it's three year built, you said.
Yeah. So, uh, in the water rate setting, new councilors weren't involved with that, existing council or should I call it older councilors or? Other councilors, um, were involved in the rate study and water rates are going up. They included a four and a half million dollar loan for a new reservoir up there. Um, the goal is, and I was, and it's slated to begin loan funding or do a loan application, uh, this coming fall. And, um, we have some, some of the developments aren't happening quite yet. Um, that they've fallen offline. They're not gonna move forward and, um, it's, I'm gonna be talking to the city management board about when do we need to secure the loan? And, and then spend three years on the project.
So we have some study going on, right?
Yes.
Those are the studies occurring, you know, commission that works. We'll have more information of exactly what kind of size that looks like, how the piping is laid out, how that affects different pressure zones, how you can connect pressure zones. I think as we talked about previously in the two or three councilors, we, we talked about the upper mountain pressure on all that workshop and how that can trickle all the way down sometimes to the south side of town, to the angle side of pressure zone. You know, right, including right connections in place. So this study will develop how to best tie some zones together. Maybe reservoirs are needed, right?
And the timing.
Leads are needed.
The timing and the cost because the sizes. So we're waiting for that reservoir options setting, which will help. Um, so, uh, moving forward, then we also have like, uh, let's say a request out for the reservoir, it's going out. Um, for that. So we'll see how that all goes. Um, so, uh, angle site is one of our number one zones.
To really work for strategic, for the biggest matters, right? Or else we end up with, what? Four hundred thousand gallon tanks scattered throughout the city. And we're not, we're not looking at the big picture, the entire city, um, to provide these, these services and make this utility to say matters. If we, we can smooth these things out as, uh, without looking at the entirety of the system. Well, and then we get infrastructure like spread out the city is, it's more expensive to manage long term. It might not be during these long terms as well. So it's really more.
And this tank isn't seismic either. We have one seismic tank in the city that's upper mountain view. And, uh, the goal is to try to make sure the tanks will make it through a seismic event, larger seismic event, right?
So you guys will see the grant acceptance at your next meeting as an action.
For that, so. Yeah. I just don't wanna see every time we're ready to grow. We've got people interested in Shelton and then we're, we're told by D O H or Ecology, oh, sorry, you can't do that. Your, your, your sewer tube fence is not good enough. Oh, your water is not good enough. Oh, your storage is not good enough. So I wanna make sure that when they're ready to come that we're ready for them to build.
It's a priority, staff. We, we talk about this every.
Yeah.
You know, every ten minutes, it seems like, yeah, you know, it, within the hallways, in the offices, Jay's coming in, Eric's coming out, going back. And we're talking about all the water system issues. I don't know, it's, it's top of our list, it's top of our priorities. It's higher than wastewater needs right now, right?
Or street needs.
Yeah, exactly. Streets. Because you're right, this is, this is kind of what's the key to adding any more development.
This is woes of a small city that's growing to a mid-sized city, right? The, the city is transitioning, you know, to some local larger. And, um, anyways, it's important that we keep up with these capital projects. That's why that six-year capital plan that we started developing, we do it for streets, sewer, water, store, is so important. At least get the projects on there and get the cost in there and figure out how we're gonna fund them, right? So, yep. So you guys ready for St. Ross School? So I did the steps. So, uh, we have, uh, three intersections in the St. Ross School project. Uh, one is up at the high school. We're gonna build a little island and, uh, at, at crosswalk, uh, improve the crosswalk and move it over to the hub and park in, uh, the trail parking lot over there. Um, another one is down, uh, there's gonna be a sidewalk down Ninth Street and, uh, coming all the way down, uh, to Ninth and Franklin. And a bunch of improvements there and, uh, 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 flashy beacon crosswalk, uh, there at Evergreen Elementary. And then if you go down the street a little bit towards Safeway, um, at Seventh and Franklin down there, that whole intersection is gonna get improved crosswalks, you know, bullbouts and, uh, make it a lot safer. So, uh, we got a grant from the state for seven hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Um, we have spent about a design, a hundred and twenty thousand, maybe a hundred and three thousand. So the remaining is going to construction. Uh, we're out for bids right now for the project. Um, and, uh, we're hopeful that the engineer's estimate is a little on the high side. Again, uh, the construction environment varies. This is a good time of year to be bidding. Um, we're hopeful that we're a little lower than the engineer's estimate. We like to walk in with a construction contract. We have the money to pay for the construction part of it. Any additional services from the design company, uh, we have to pay our staff some money too. That's our inspectors. They come out of the project, uh, and also then we like a ten percent contingency on top of the project. When you walk in the door, it's been designed, been to bid. There's unknowns out there. Uh, one of the unknowns is Shelton Creek. It's, I don't know if you guys know. It's, I don't know if you guys know, right along Safeway in the picture there, right under the Safeway sign. Is the creek, it's a sidewalk cover also, right there and. You can't do a lot of work right there because you have this creek and this concrete flu with a top on it. Well, we're trying to put an ADA ramp in there and replace the sidewalk and stuff, right? So uh things like that, you know, would kind of get you a little bit sometimes, but that's why you want ten percent contingency. So uh bids open on the eighteenth. And um then we'll be compiling them and um then also, if if we need more money, we can talk to the states. See what they have to say, because this was state word, um they're seeing a lot of this right now too, we had a great conversation with them today. And uh so more to come, uh I know we're looking at trying to warn this project right away and get these people going. And so uh it's on the council calendar for the next meeting, isn't it? Yeah, on six. This, oh, it's on February sixth, okay, we have a lot more to come at that meeting for this project, any questions?
Could you stop me please? This is actually a combination, you guys have two grimmances, um we basically, it's a two, a two-based project and I think she kind of separated it into two. Let's start on the left-hand side, we basically got about a uh direct appropriation. Uh from the legislature for about three point two million dollars. To basically, um we need to upgrade the headworks um to increase the capacity and the size of the screens. To accommodate future higher flows of the plan, so this is other people's money. This is an opportunity for us to improve the headworks there. In addition, and this project is actually gonna go first, the project on the right, uh was another uh ARBA. Funded project on for us, this is actually going to increase the size of the amount of water that we can actually store. Currently, we're at thirty to forty thousand gallons at this point. This project uh will add a five hundred thousand dollar or five hundred thousand gallon tank to that. With the caveat, you guys, that as the demand increases for that reclaimed water, we're gonna have the ability to expand and sell more of it. So this really is kind of like a future hopeful, I will tell you in talking in my brief times with the tribes. This is something they, and I've talked to their uh some of their representatives, this is something they very much advocate for. Um reason being is we're putting water back into the system, there's concerns with regard to flows. In um the main creek downtown as well as the others, um so. They have been very supportive of that, I think what we're gonna see here spurred off of this is it's some additional monies, I don't know. How familiar you're all with our actual facility. Currently, we sell some of that water to the prison as well as the Washington State Patrol. Sometimes we have an abundance of water, we actually have a spray area in which we have basically have uh. Above ground injectors that basically inject the water, hits the ground, it infiltrates back in. One of the future projects that we are looking at is looking at a way to actually inject it into the ground as opposed to. As you just. Not getting a lot of water back into the ground.
Fifty percent of it's probably lost.
The intent is to get it back into the ground, so the tribe and I've already talked to their biologists, they. Are willing to write a letter of support to help us get more grant money to that.
The third spray field is in that waters of Goldsboro Creek, so that's the location.
Another thing we've talked about, but that's not like a twenty year, twenty or thirty year plan is to. Is to put injection wells incorrect and get rid of putting anything out in the bay.
That's that's kind of separate from this, right?
That's different because this is.
Same water though, right? But this sewer that's clean and. Same process, yeah.
Same process, but yeah. Five hundred thousand gallons of reclaimed water is an economic driver for industrial, it's right? It's it's much cheaper than potable water to for cooling or processing purposes. You gotta be able to to provide that amount of water and reclaimed water in one area of our community. It's much more enticing because most industrial developers are coming in and those are jobs that.
You want larger users though, uh small users is tough to get on the pipe economically. And uh like residential single-family homes, you know, where you put in a reclaimed service for every one of them. Some cities have done that, but it's very difficult.
During the process of, you know, reconstructing the cannabis grow that burned, um had no fire suppression. Previous and that's right on the port property and that's perfect, fine example that that could have suppression on. It could be non-potable su- suppression and at three cent whatever they.
Yeah, with the port there too, that's huge for us, and I know Brent, I know you guys talked to them. About potential uses in the future and that could really be a driver for us, you guys.
Is there a way, I don't wanna get down policy on this too much, but I mean. For certain industrial, I mean, is there. Vertical standards about using this as opposed to clean drinking water for fire suppression? Yeah, or an incentive to do it or something like that.
I I think it's cost driven because the reclaim rate is so low. Right, that it's it's more of a cost benefit for the development. Uh for sprinkler systems, you might not see it as much because they don't really use any water, they sit there. Hopefully they sit there a hundred percent of the time, right? But um I've seen it really for a big sports field complex, I've really seen that for the summer use, industrial processing big. You know, they need big.
You're flooding flooding the track at the state control, right, they're just putting water on the ground to drive through it. They're flushing toilets, the crouch etcetera, right, they're being excited when that water.
Irrigate.
Irrigate, absolutely, those are those are, if there's any big industrial usage. Typically requires cooling or something like that or processing. The water is used for processing and you've been industrial by nature too.
Going back to your third report slide about.
Yeah.
You know, the other challenges that come up with, you know, we can't build houses because the clean drinking water aspect, but.
Four years has passed the law uh allowing you to drink reclaimed water to put it back in the system again. Uh ultra pure water bill, right, there's high. We're near that, I mean, you should be able to drink the water out of this plant and be safe, it's chlorinated, the pathogens are.
We we had a city manager that drank like four levels of it, it was like dark, it was a little lighter, it was a little lighter.
You you made a very important statement that I want to make sure that you're aware of, is this is gonna have a policy decision for you guys, this is a hot area. Having worked in very urbanized areas, they ultimately talk about this perfect pipe. Get it in the ground, so I just wanted to be aware of it and my reasoning for saying that to you is, look, we've already got five million dollars. This is a hot issue, it wouldn't surprise me if we got another couple million to go do the injection system with invaders. It would not surprise.
If we gain a bunch more water under the. Right now, so it's like, I think this is a good project, I you you had. I did a question though, we didn't answer, so the main plant, right now we're discharged into Oakland Bay. We want to divert within that normally diversion pump station up here on the hill. Send a bunch more water up to the membrane plant that's currently going to the main plant down there. Treat it and put it back in for uses and then also to Goldsboro Creek, so we're gonna cut the flows of the main plant. But I mean, you're right, twenty years from now, the next major upgrade of the main plant is to put in reverse osmosis filtration. Take that water and it doesn't go to the bay anymore, it gets pumped up into Mill Creek or somewhere else, right? So I mean, it, long term, the main plant should go offline also.
Yeah, question, the. The reclaimed water, why can't that be used for the fire uh fire hydrants, why can't we get? Because, I mean, as you said, you're spilling water out at thirty or forty thousand gallons, when you have five hundred thousand gallons, you're gonna have a whole lot more water to spill out. So why don't we uh?
If there's if there's if there's readily available, yeah.
I meant our fire hydrants throughout the city, yeah, we need to put it in.
And our our existing um fire hydrants are connected to our potable water system and you can cross tap like those, so it takes.
Unless you're in California. I don't know, that's not a true thing.
Yeah.
They have a bunch of rules to this, right, they didn't do this lightly, there's a lot of thinking.
Yeah, for recharging the well, we bought it off of first, we're drinking.
So. Yeah, the conveyance time from our spray field to Goldsboro Creek has been estimated to be six months. Yeah, long period of time. Which I was surprised, I figured it'd be a month or two, something like that.
How deep are roughly, you know?
Well, so seven hundred is. And our partners who travel in these have. So we've been working on this issue for quite some time, so it's nice to have that information available to us so they can help us.
Yeah, they didn't do that conveyance study, I wouldn't have known that number, because they wanted to evaluate our spray field. And what is it actually doing to Goldsboro Creek, again, there's a significant benefit even today, getting more water up there. Will help the base soils of Goldsboro Creek during the summer months primarily, right?
So when you hear the arguments, I might well accept it. Doesn't recharge, it doesn't.
That's correct, yeah.
Okay.
Any any more questions about that particular project?
So uh slide eight. So uh Wallace Neeland and Shelton Springs, uh that intersection, uh we will deliver in two thousand nineteen eighteen. Six hundred and fifty thousand dollars to design some upgrades to the intersection. Um one of the update upgrades was a roundabout, uh we have a preliminary sign on that. And another competing option to that is a the potential upgrading the signal. Put in some additional right turn lanes, uh putting in left turn permissives. I don't know if you guys know, those are those flashing yellows, right, that if there's no one coming and you're in the left turn lane, it turns on so you can go. Um we've been, we've had a meeting with the state today, talked about the intersection, uh new roundabout there. Four million bucks and up maybe, you know, they're all pretty expensive. Uh the dude's turn lane improvements.
Without any property acquisition.
Correct, that's correct, that's just the.
That should be big enough over there, it's. Pretty big area there.
Just hoping to be the people that drive that intersection, my understanding is, is it fails during school times, heavy peak, peak times. But other than that, it seems to operate okay, so that's at. Two thirty, two o'clock to maybe three thirty and then in the morning, you know, so uh. Anyways, we have a traffic engineer, SCJ Alliance is looking at the intersection, they're doing some updated traffic counts. And we're getting a memorandum from them to evaluate the signalization of the intersection, what is it? Over a forty year period, what's the level of service in forty years compared to a roundabout? And are they similar, because we know the signal is a quarter of the cost. And so uh anyways, that part of the issue is, is if we continue forward with the roundabout. Securing grant funding for that is very difficult, um because of the level of service that is operating that right now. We don't have a traffic jam for hours on end, you know, where people are waiting, waiting, waiting. And so those type of intersections are hard to fund if they're not failed a hundred percent.
Transportation budget, that we've heard about in this session. If if transportation budget is essentially, so.
So the reality and what we as staff are trying to determine here, you guys, is, uh you know. We could go down the pathway of using utilizing that money to get the design work done, or those, those, not just that intersection, but another one. Um I went back and read, we read the initial report that was done and candidly. Even if we did a up, a signal upgrade, at least their projections in twenty forty show that intersection not broken. Still meets our level of service. You ask, what is our level of service, the council's established a level of service D, which is. It's a level of service, a lot, I've been in this, I know you've been in this, a lot of folks are at C, D's a fine opportunity. The reality is, is that if we do the signalization project. In twenty forty, we won't have a broken intersection, meaning it will continue to function, so we really need to ask ourselves. We think we can do something and we may need a little bit of money to upgrade the signal, but instead of utilizing that money for. Some projects that we just put on a shelf until we get money to fund them. Why not utilize it to actually do some improvements on the signal and improve that? The other thing that's important is, as we were looking through the study, I think they needed to kind of do a little bit more analysis, which they're going to do. They're actually gonna go out between the seven and nine AM periods. And the two, the one thirty to about four thirty periods. To really get a feel for the what it's like, uh Brooke Kiltz, she has, takes her kid, Kadego say, she said, it's broken, Aaron is broken. I blow the water every day, I get it, I absolutely get it, so. Yeah, this is kind of kind of a strategy, policy, to kind of thinking, at least the thought process is, why not utilize? We don't wanna turn money back, um and but kind of where we're at right now. We kind of, we're kind of at a a decision point, do we go down the bous, or do we send this money and upgrade? It does seem to make the most economical sense since we have it to maybe try this piece, but that's another discussion. I think we have a policy decision for council.
A mall port putting up, putting two left turn uh signals up there and. Yeah, same time, and that would solve seven o'clock and then three, two and three o'clock problem right there.
This afternoon from Olympic College to the entrance of the high school and then back out to Wallace Neeland again. Um at Oakland Junior High, twenty eight minutes is what it took me, I mean, that's like what, a mile?
Over the left turn lane, the same cars would go at a time, it'd be like three minutes probably. Uh but I, we can't go about talking about that road without me bringing up my Olympic Junior High. And that mess right there where kids are dodging cars and all, obviously at Mountain View, there's no crosswalk or K Street.
There is some good news, you guys, they are opening another round. We just heard St. Ross Schools. Doing the exact same thing, hopefully what you're seeing will, the previous project, we will do that in those other areas.
Thinking bigger on this. So from one oh one to Highway three, down Wallace to Johns Prairie. That's gonna be, like, why aren't we looking at? Why are we looking at adding capacity as that grows, because. Annexing out towards, you know, potentially beauty three, there's gonna be. Four brake traffic heading towards one oh one, keeping two lanes, it dies there at Shelton Springs, goes a single lane, why aren't we designing outward? Um acquiring it right away now and then bundling this with Johns Prairie and their. Thirteenth and the going after, it's like three in a row, right, three roundabouts in a row. And go for a larger project and go for ten dollars as opposed to state dollars. Go for ten, twenty five million and get three roundabouts from one oh one.
The state about that though, and where they perform today, there's other people fail intersections that are coming in and getting. We we don't.
Yeah, and so that's the predicament now that we're in, so with the loss and repeat, we're not, we're not poor enough, right?
Yeah.
But we're not bringing in enough revenue. And uh.
Mayor brought up the the crosswalk there. Always been hit, there hasn't been enough accidents reported, so it doesn't score. Funding strategy, right, somebody need to get in and crosswalk.
Cause I was in a local road safety plan application, it wasn't one that was funded. So I want to take the signal, signals. You've got me going down a whole different track.
Yeah.
That uh you can take traffic through signals during peak hours and s- march them all through signals. And then you have open gaps for people to drive in roundabouts or indiscriminate when the traffic hits them. It lets it all through, then there's a little gap, you don't know, signals do do a little better job. Especially if they have a lot of driveways and non-signalized access points.
I guess, you know, if you're gonna go down this round, spend, spend the cash, you're gonna upgrade one signal that's not connected to the other.
Right.
Right, so you're gonna tune from from signal to signal to signal, we have the lineup on one oh one that comes on during lunch and the day. People aren't gonna see, I don't think, right, they're not gonna feel an improvement, you know, we're gonna upgrade the old signal controller and that's expensive. All that, but uh the traveling public isn't gonna see improvement necessarily, and those left turns, that's not, that's not the uh conflict in the morning. It's the through traffic, you know what I mean, so you're still gonna stack up through traffic. So I guess, I coming back to it is looking at the design differently. Um I'm I'm with you, it's hard to carve the money, you're not wrong, we're in a tough spot.
The the other thing that we've been at least talking about is the potential of doing inter nets as well, that would add a lot more capacity. That would add a lot more capacity, basically what an interconnect, you guys, is basically all the signals are talking to each other. So if there's impact at one, it basically green, 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 while they're going through and just gets the cars through fast.
They have to be compatible though, not. But we don't know if the other signals are compatible, yeah.
So we don't know. So we'd be opening up that channel.
They're probably aging to two.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, still watch that. And then it's before we stop, I'm in thirteen, Wallace Jones area.
Yeah, I just think, you know, you have a lot of conflict points in a signalized intersection. Roundabout, so, and if it's gonna be truck traveling, school buses. I'm gonna get any conflict points.
Runabouts are more expensive, one of the other benefits is pedestrian traffic. Now, even crossing at the inward and outward bound lanes, you see the person standing there. You know, as you navigate, uh, going across a roundabout, so they are safer, there's that cost benefit thing. So more to come on this, so, uh, we have another analysis called another memorandum, we'll be coming back to share with you guys the findings.
So this is a, a compliments to our city manager, uh, he actually is the one that applied for these grant funds, uh, a while back. And, um. One of the biggest issues we have here in the civic center is safe ingress egress for officers. Out of this building into their, their parked vehicles over here. There are some site problems with regard to the potential of somebody hiding behind a door and without a camera to see. It's problematic, so. We are, and I, we actually have a meeting on Thursday, we're gonna utilize Williams Architecture, we're gonna help us get this book together. At least just a, a basic site plan, very inexpensively, the intent here is that we're gonna place a wrought iron fence. Along that road which has been vacated, um, in essence, it's not gonna be used for the public, it's gonna be our own private parking area. With the intent that we're gonna have this wrought iron fence as well as gates on each end. In addition, at least what's being discussed is the potential, um, to have sensors in the ground. So once the officer leaves, it triggers that and the gate automatically opens so they can get out. Conversely, the other way, a way to get in quickly so that they can get back in and lock it back up and secure it. In addition to the fencing, we are gonna, uh. Luke, it's Manny, Luke Manning, our facilities person, did a lot of work trying to standardize citywide. Safety improvements associated with the city, and what I'm talking about is. Ingress egress through doors, card reader system potentially, um, as well as a, a new camera system. Um, and cameras at our other, our well points and those things really where you need to have them to protect. Our, our infrastructure, so. There's going to be a, a, a camera upgrade and door opening upgrades. Um, as part of this project, Mark did secure it, so an additional two hundred thousand plus to do the rest of the city. So this is kind of the first phase. But the, the, the importance, the work that Luke did is basically standardized everything so that everything. Will have it at all, or similar at all of our same facilities, everything will be interchangeable. Some of the bigger questions that we as staff are gonna have to start asking ourselves, who's gonna monitor it and, and those types of things. Um, but this is gonna be, I think, a really good project, our intent, you guys, is to have this done. June, so something will be in place.
For the, for the new council members, we actually budgeted for, um, car blocks in the, this, in the city, but. We stole money to repair the, replace the fireworks at the library, cause they were having to do, um, twenty four hour a day. Firewatch because.
Definitely mayor mentioned, you have more difficulty with keys and key controls. So they issued you all keys, right, you have two keys to get in this building, um, unlucky enough, you know, in one. So, um, that, that way we can monitor who's coming and going. Uh, if there's cameras, we have ability to place cameras in the entrance to see if somebody is backing back in and in place, uh. We can, we can lock somebody out and push a button and they lose their car key or, uh, for some reason. Don't want them to access facility anymore, there's more employee, they're in charge of car key. Uh, we have much more control.
Do we budget that again for this year?
But that's the, um, that's the direct appropriation, so.
No, for all the locks?
We're gonna focus on the first responders, critical services, court police, Macecom area first. And then our critical facilities, our wells, our pump stations, our tree plants, uh, in those areas first and foremost. We'll get infrastructure put in place and we'll expand from there because we're looking at an expanded system, right? You can just buy the components as needed, whatever doors, whatever cameras, right, you'll have the software, it's cloud storage. It can be monitored, it can monitor, according, you know, everything you need. You can do on your phone now, but much more, uh, dynamic, there's.
Locking a lock door remotely, you need to let somebody in, let somebody out, it's just the, right, sorry answer, please, yeah.
Yeah, so we, we will, we will target the critical infrastructure and first responders first. Money left over will trickle that down into our other facilities and then estimate it with budget accordingly to, to. Spread this system throughout the city.
The other thing I neglected to mention is, uh, better lighting out there, you guys, um, as counselors, you, what? It's about these bright lights and getting complaints from, we intend to shield it, to direct it directly down specifically in the parking area. So we don't believe that's gonna be an issue, but increase the lighting out there, it's boiling right now, just needs to get better, so.
The one thing I will mention, the doors are recessed on that side of me, so they open a door, they can't see out into the street. Uh, unless it's right in front of you, so you decide, you can put up a camera outside, you need to, again, bad stop. Then look at the camera and see if anybody's out there before they exit that, we're making sure it's safe, so. If we can at least keep people sixty, seventy feet away. You know, it doesn't eliminate the entire risk, but it keeps people.
Taking bets on how long before the gates always are open during normal business hour?
Yeah.
Yeah, so the model program gates are a problem, you know, on holidays and that sort of thing. You're responsible to program this and then, yeah. Uh, maintenance yard is a good example, uh, there's a, a fence with a gate and a lock. We seem to go there in the middle of the night to go fill up their gas, get out of the car, they unlock the lock, they open it up, they go in there, they drive out, they get out of the car. They relock it, well, the new gate there will have an RFID tag right in the windshield. When it pulls up the gate, it'll open for them, they can drive in, fill up, and then they'll be able to get back out, it will open for them. Uh, also, we have, uh, pop trucks probably going out this week, same thing, they're out there in the middle of the night. They got a lock, unlocked, it's supposed to work, you know, they're all trying to take care of things, so there's big benefits, uh, to these light chronic gate controls.
Just make sure you always have manual.
You have to have. You have to have a magate server with a padlock or something on it, right, cause if that controller goes down. You gotta open it up and there's ways to get the gate to open, but you have to be able to get into the secured area.
I didn't mention that too, there will be pedestrian gates too, yes.
So, uh, slide ten. This is all other notable, uh, from projects, so we're working on a new mobile maintenance yard. Um, the yard on Pine Street is a couple acres and there's, there's no road path in there. Um, there's some landscape changes on that perhaps, uh, getting back to you guys in the next month or two. Uh, we want some of the topics sort of changed, um, and, uh, if you have further questions, give me a call about that. But, uh, we'll, we'll see what happens with lay down yard, um, the, the local road safety plan projects. Um, that we have Olympic Highway North and Ice Street, that's by the Al, Urban, Alpeters, what's the name, is that right? Uh, Ice Street. Oh, Olympic Highway North and Ice Street, uh, Shell Alpeters is on Highway South and Bell Game. There's some sidewalk issue there and some crosswalk things that need to be taken care of. Um, Olympic Highway North and Ice Street is probably gonna be taken care of as part of the overlay of. The grant that we just received on the highway north, that, that was some matching drums that went to that project. So the local road safety plan money is going to go help another project that we have, that helps on our match. Um, just so you know, that was four hundred and a half million dollars, is that on here, four point two, four point two million, okay. Um, anyways, uh, so that project was four point two million, we're gonna kick it off here probably in the next six months, four months. Something like that, we have a backlog for projects right now, we're trying to get out, uh. Anyway, so the local railroad, uh, safety, uh, plan, Railroad and Third, another one. That, uh, Railroad and Fourth, from what I understand, has a signal there. Railroad and Third was identified as the local road safety plan, so the pedestrian crossings are somewhat spaced out a little bit. On, on Railroad Avenue, when we get into the preliminary design of that, I'll be talking to you folks about. Is it third, is it fourth, okay, third, okay, that's one person. But not that, uh, so Olympic Highway North I talked about, access, uh, security and controls, we talked about that. Um, the ADA transition plan, um, that's all our ramps or, or no ramps in auto location. Um, when we do funding applications, we get points deducted from the state. Because we don't have a way to transition, uh, to get ramps in and in compliance with state standards. Um, we're working on the pavement condition index citywide, um, we need to know where we are right now. And certain target future projects, uh, where are we gonna go with additional projects? And, uh, it will, uh, we'll be able to identify our yearly expenditures on pavement pres- preservation. Oh, we spent enough money to keep going on it. Uh, we have some railroad, uh, track, uh, crossing removals, that's in, uh, Highway three, it's the first one. Then you come up to seventh and they have another one at Holberg, and, uh, this is the old Simpson Railline, we got some federal grant funds for that. Um, we're gonna be downtown working on the street tree and sidewalk replacements, I spoke to council about that last year. And, uh, working more on that project. That are pushing the sidewalk up, and then the city water reservoir options setting, uh, as we spoke earlier, we worked on that. So that's it for the public works projects for twenty twenty four, uh, any further questions?
I think I'll follow up. Finance Director Givens and I have talked about, about being more specific with CID within our budget funding processes. So we've got some information, a list, it's, it's drawn, it's drawn out of the budget a little bit more, so. Uh, it's more recognizable, and maybe, maybe even more comprehensive and understandable, rather than being embedded in each of the projects as well. So we'll be seeing more of this as we do the year, particularly when we get to the management process and the CFPs and they're not safe.
Yeah, typically before budget time, I'll give you a presentation on what the proposed twenty twenty five, uh, budgeted projects are, uh, so you folks. It'll be maybe some of these and, and new ones, right, so more to come on that. So you ready for the next topic?
If no one has any questions? Alright, alright, so we'll move on. We have another item in Public Works Department information about general service engineer consultant contract.
Good evening, Council Jay Harris, again, your Public Works Director, uh, so, uh, general services engineering, uh, that. We've been using a contract engineer to help us do, uh, also small studies for us, cost estimates. Some small projects, helping us with our yearly painting projects, uh, sort of where to go, they were helping us with the pavement condition index model. Um, they helped us with grant writing, uh, Grant Osborne was our, our last one for the last four years. And helped us significantly, especially at the wastewater site, uh, receiving some significant grants. Uh, for that system, um, they also have designed a few of our projects, uh, they're working on the replant water tank for us. They also did the low one to high school tank, uh, a, a pipeline project for us, so they're an integral part. Um, they supply city staff with, uh, accompanied with knowledge and expertise that, um. You have a team of civil engineers basically, and you have inspectors and you, uh, have construction management people. They're really, you know, are seasoned, um, you have o- office staff, clerical staff. Um, you could have a, a GIS people there, you know, that know, uh, how that system works. Definitely Autocat, um, experience, we don't have a lot of Autocat experience here at the city, so, um. We've been utilizing general services engineering, Grant Osborne's contract was up at the end of the year. Um, staff is gonna be putting out an RFP, um, for the contractual services for that. We're looking at someone a couple days a week here, it's sort of senior engineer staff member, there, we want him actually here, Grant Osborne. Would remote it and all that, it's nice to have staff here at the city. The sinks come up, you can walk over to Aaron's cubicle, I've sat in there, it's capable a lot of time during the day, boom, hall, whatever. It's nice having staff here, so, um. With that, uh, we will be putting out this RFP, we're gonna rate them, then we're gonna select a company. And then we have to come to you folks, uh, you know, to, to ratify, uh, our selection. So, uh, we'll, we'll, there'll be more to come on that, once, once we get out the RP and then go and score them all. Um, currently, we're also down the key engineering position, our city engineer. Who serves a lot of different roles, um, this year tonight, a lot of times, city engineer will run this presentation. Uh, not the public works director, I'm acting as city engineer right now, um. I, I do that, I've done a lot of city engineering work, um, the public works director role is more of a manager. I need to be down with the wastewater treatment plant or the other plant up on the hill, or the maintenance division. Making sure that we have a, a rock and salt and stuff for the snowstorm. And, uh, anyways, I'm a collaborator and I'm all in engineering right now, so I'm lucky that I have superintendents, staff. At other facilities that are keeping us going, but, uh, I'm sort of visionary, right? So the city engineer position's vacant, uh, they take, typically would take on, you see how many projects we have. Well, Aaron is trying to keep these all going, right, with some of my help. And, uh, and, and Brent Armstrong has been helping also, but the city engineer will typically, you know, take four of those, that sort of thing. And take them on, um, they also lead the private development review, uh, element of our city. And, um, that's our engineering standard, our interim permitting system. Um, we have a, the full time inspector, senior inspector, Amy Anderson, um, they lead the, the stormwater compliance person, that's Kenny Ober. And, uh, so that's a huge role, um, we've been out for, what, a month and a half now? We're posting two months, something like that, um, we haven't received application. For the city engineer.
So we actually tried to be creative, we posted as a city engineer or a development review team.
Supervisor.
Supervisor.
A younger engineer.
Trying to see if we had somebody that didn't have their PE, maybe they have a IT, they want to work underneath the engineer, they, they're more on the development review side things than. Civil engineering, just a bit broaden our scope, see if we have the ability to bring somebody really that had interest. Definitely, Mayor Schmidt knows as well, the rest of us about the, the market for civil engineering at the state level. It's a difficult market right now, our, our contract engineers are having trouble finding people to, uh, supplement their in-house staff as well.
You don't have expensive lucrative projects where we won't get interest either from, from the contracting community, so. That's why I was going back to the one, the eight hundred thousand, one million, two million dollar projects, I mean. We gotta get over ten to start getting interest from the consulting community, at least, you know. Outside of our typical consulting firms that are already kind of on a retainer, work for us, but. Um, it's gonna be more expensive. And unfortunately, it's just, it's gonna be more expensive, right, it's just more expensive doing this and, um. You know, we had an engineer, we had associate engineer at one point. Saves a lot of, uh, well, have that stamp in the building as well as useful, um, you know, like. I just think of, uh, the fights under construction as opposed to during the design phase and having an engineer in house to help. You're designing things and, um, it saves a lot of pain once you're under, under contract.
As useful as a contract and design engineer is, you, you still check at work, right? We, we are still, you know, there's still, there's still check and balances within that process, we wanna make sure we're getting involved in product. Make sure it means the scope that we're putting out, we can't assume that it works to be done right the first time. So still some check and balance, much like there is for um, project inspection, where we either. Contract that out or we have, there's just some staff that are out watching the water lines and watching the pavement, but then on the sidelines, doing, making sure it means so. And it's me and you that's the project, so.
On the consultant, who would be the liaison?
I mean, city engineer, but you're looking at, you're looking at the staff that's doing that.
When I, when I'm bogging down is, you know, you just talked about how you're doing engineering, but you're still gonna be doing engineering and you're a consultant here. You're gonna be here to be reviewing all their invoices to ensure that that's accurate, right, and you're making sure what the work that they're doing is on. On schedule and according to what we belong to, they're not on their own.
Where they are not.
We, we brought us a, a third party, you you know, uh, engineering consultant here, they'll be taking us, that again, it's a third party. And there is, there is a bit of, of work to still be done.
And all depends on who you get too, I mean, you could get people that aren't as qualified or experienced or as good. Having a staff member here is the ultimate desire, right, but you can't. Hire up a bunch of people, then the projects tie off and then you let them go, um, you know, we typically want to just try to keep. An adequate level of staffing, and with the number of projects we have right now, we definitely could use a staff engineer, I mean, there's no doubt about that. And then still use the consulting engineers um, to be supplementing us.
We still have development review, you know, we still have projects.
I've taken off.
We have standards and code requirements that can be addressed at the same time too, and that's, that's one of those functions.
Mentioned a good point though, Jay is, if we have a slow year where capital destruction goes or comes to a halt, you know. If there are projects to work on, you know, so we have that at TE in-house. You know, we're laying staff off again, right, we have a slow year, so it's a necessary thing, I think, uh, it's just. The, the resounding narrative is cheaper or more efficient, it's just government can't scale, so we have to have. The product sector to, to back us up and augment our workforce.
We certainly don't have flexibility in our, our state, but we have to realize that, maybe have to. I started here thirty some years ago, we had, we had city engineer at that point, we also had contract engineer, cheering for us that. With, with use force, yeah, which was here in in-house, seventy days a week, and I think we had contract, we had contract engineers. Ever since, whether it's development review engineers that just have all of the deal, and any proposed development coming across the counter. Project management or capital project, that's been, it's been something here for thirty some years.
Is this like a per diem contract or they get paid by the job, or is it just like a monthly, it's like, okay.
Yeah.
No job and no pay.
Yeah, and I think that, but yeah, it, it's.
Easier to get us in a consultant, if you run out of money.
Yeah.
We've been doing that with, with going inspection for years, you know, we got in-house, we got foot bros.
Yeah, at times, right, the problem is you, you, you fall in line with their schedule, right, there, you might not be their priority. He's here two weeks, he, he she, they're here two days a week, or they have three days a week, depends on priorities, so you're kind of. Battling for lack of a better word, um, their, uh, their priorities with your priorities and trying to convey that on a daily basis and.
Because we lack a common development code, we can't necessarily partner with any other agencies because they don't know our development code. It's not efficient that way, so, yeah, that's another problem.
So I, I think there is an opportunity, and you'll see this as I bring more projects forward, candidly. There's two areas where we're really getting hammered, and that's the design piece, but it's also the construction management piece, as an example. Um, the well one project, uh, design was about three hundred thousand, um, construction management is about three hundred fifty thousand. I think, and I'm not, you're the boss, there is some ability, I have a lot of construction management experience. As well as lab experience and those kinds of things, and we have Amy, and there's talk of maybe potentially getting another one depending on. Uh, another inspector, I think we could cut that three fifty construction management out of it. And take it in-house, but again, it's workload, it's all that kind of stuff, so I think there's potential there for sure. And just utilize, if indeed this trend of no BZP continues, just utilize them to design these things and we'll get a. It's kind of.
Yeah, again, we want to be strategic, right, we want to plan that accordingly, we want to be a candidate. If we are rain step on for a project, we don't have work with them later and running up that. You know, hire anybody, right, it was gonna come to the city show for every project and, and, and go away, um, the, the next down.
So that's the reality with our budget right now, it is that ball.
I, I mean, part of this conversation, you know, kind of tails into, you know, some of the, you know, the other staffing, yeah, right? We reduce the dystopian, uh, we're not even talking about engineering services, but darn it, we just. When the bathrooms are clean, it's pretty nice to, to be here at work when the bathrooms are clean on a daily basis. Um, we've, we've reduced admin services director, our facilities director positions too, so. Um, that, that goes across, you know, a lot of departments here in the city, we're getting through this, but these are conversations that you need to hear. On a regular basis, because of the reality of what we're dealing with, and it has a budgetary impacts, uh, that you're gonna see. Um, and that was addressed, you know, going to, going into this year, but I think you saw on my Friday email about our insurance costs. And, you know, being, oh, like over two years, well, a five hundred thousand dollar increase in two years. Um, that, that money's not made up anywhere else, right, we're continuing to approach and services to make up those, those costs, so.
It's manager spending, Mark, come on.
It, it's an open conversation, we want to have one regularly with the council, because you need to understand that you need to communicate with your constituency. You need to know what's going on, kind of upstairs, downstairs, and the rest of the room, so, um, really wanna take the opportunity as much as you can to. So you understand, um, some of these constraints, some of these issues that are down for the day.
Right, already know the six hundred fifty K from twenty eighteen or whatever, nineteen. It's still sitting there, you know, that's the other thing, we have to be able to portray the confidence, whoever's granting us the money that we're gonna pull the process off. And we, we exceeded, we turned it in.
The western gateway was delayed, it took a year or two too long to get it signed out, get to bid and get it built. We went in for Olympic Highway North grant funds and was denied because that project wasn't completed yet, so uh, we ran into that.
Well, that was part of COVID too.
I mean, what's, what the trends there, mayor, the trends there, we have a lot of cold grant money, but yeah, I can see. The funny, the funny issue essentially doesn't care, right? They gave you money, we want to see it spent. Well, they, they have given reports too, right, they have, they have folks sitting in the legislature that are funding these, these programs at the same time, so.
Looked at National Highway Construction Cost Index, grew fifty four percent in the last four years, right, so cost escalation. That six hundred fifty K that we got, I, I guarantee you, you know, our estimated cost back then versus today, I mean, that's nine hundred thousand dollars today. Right, we don't have the three hundred K.
I don't believe it was six fifty was the ask either. And we just.
I think we asked for two million.
I think the ask was two.
We want to build around that.
Yeah, here's six fifty, okay, now what do we do with it, right, so it sits because you're in, you're almost in kind of. Decision paralysis, you know, does, does it make sense to design a roundabout, does it make sense to put it into, um, you know, into the signal and then. You decide not to do anything by not making a decision, now we've lost that binding power.
And TBD fell off the radar with AWC, right? Yeah, it wasn't priority, so come twenty twenty six, about three hundred eighty five thousand in revenue a year for streets is gone, laborizes. We don't see it anymore.
Well, we're hoping to.
So.
Back on priority.
Big projects. Those state capitals. How many, so you outlined what, how many roughly, how many projects in a year can we handle today? Six, seven?
Depending on size, so, right?
Yeah, and that's the other thing, is that there is, there are several big projects, there are several little projects, there's also. At least from my perspective, there's also other projects, and this is just an example, D O H is coming down on us with regard to our tanks. And getting new vents in, they have to meet the new standard. Basically, we got a hundred thousand bucks that we gotta figure out, get designing work done, get all that, so there's a lot of that other stuff too, not just capital. Yeah, other projects, products, police, police fencing areas, like throwing all that in there together, so.
Yeah.
How much can I handle, I think we're at about ten projects right now.
That's, that's great, we have a project manager in public works and it's taking on some of these other civilian projects, we don't have. We have, we have a field supervisor that's in the guild, that's, that's, you know, cleaning HVAC systems and changing filters. Maybe like the unregulated power supply system here for nine one one facilities too. Um, we're stretching some people to the points that, that really, you know, get to, where, we have to be really careful when we make some mistakes. And they're costly, so we have to kind, you know, we have to be, we have to be strategic, as I said, how many times tonight, I want to overstate it, but.
Yeah, agreed, and the other things are other projects such as studies and those kinds of things, such as the ADA transition plan. Help manage that too, get that going, there's a, there's a lot, it's just a matter of prioritizing.
I don't know if we've answered your question, I don't know if we've kind of determined this, the, the level scope, whether it's number of projects or, or that. Or total value, right, um, we'll know, you know, in a few months when Aaron's sleeping under his desk and waving up, I think. I don't know if that's gonna be, yeah, that's gonna be the key or, um, but we need to be conscious of that.
And there's grant money available right now, we're not using, you know, great funds and TBD funds, we're, we're using these for matching. To great grant opportunities, um, I don't know how long, you know, the state of Washington is going to be, you know, keep. Good threat coming around, but there's all sorts of cycles coming out all the time.
But how they, how that's distributed now.
I mean, we just picked up the uh, uh, design for the backup coordination. Uh, at the main wastewater plant, we didn't get the full ground ore, which was uh, taking our uh, slack tight tank. And making it into, uh, if the UV system goes offline, we can chlorinate the water before it goes into the bay. Which opens up more shellfish areas, and so we got the design grant for that, and uh, the timeline on that's a little quick. And so it's just.
So our, our UV is, is uh, redundant now though, so is that possible, that could be both at the same time?
You, you will be done.
Still be the primary system, the redundancy will be an chlorine.
But we, we did WVs, uh, since I've been here, we did. We added UVs.
We are overdosing.
Yes.
But we do have more dosage than required, but it was a good thing, because a couple of months ago, we lost a bag of them. And uh, it, there was a park problem, and lucky we were able to get it back in within a couple of days. But it was good that we had a lot more dosing than we needed, because when we lost some of those lights, we obviously stole that standard.
Ground paper design, to get it designed.
And the slack tank, will that prevent it from overfilling, it's done that what, once or twice uh, since that was built? Just a couple, just a couple of years ago, and the heavy, heavy, heavy rains, we, the slack tank. That's for tide. When tide is way out.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, yeah, or it's, it's on, or it's on an ad, it's on an ad, so it's not moving, put it out.
Yeah.
The water's water, it makes.
So if you don't want a pipe.
Yeah.
Well, we had a release. Not from slack type.
Right, I just believe that was the entire, the entire plan was, was helpful.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And those I N I projects, we haven't talked about I N I, but we have more bases to go to. Those are highly grant fundable, we're really trying to concentrate, oh, I'm sorry, inflow and infiltration. Into the city sewer system, so you have a pipe underground and all the joints, you get infiltration into the joints. And so you're treating groundwater down the wastewater plant, if the pipe is tight line, you don't get that in. And then you have inflow, which is uh, some pumps in people's houses.
For reference, um, the soup surcharge by being marked, you know, the mammals, that was nine nine. So that's a lot of groundwater, that's more going into the sewers. It comes out at the bottom of the hill, all rushes down, you know, pops mammals and it flows out in the, in the park, you remember that? You've been here a while, so, yeah, when you type in those pipes, you can, you don't get that groundwater into it, you're just moving. Wastewater instead of that groundwater, and you're surcharging the areas, but also you're not treating all that water, not necessarily.
But it's likely with a engineer bringing them on board, I'd probably start them on the basin six A I N I project. You know, and hand them a project and keep Aaron out of some of them. So which is, you're spending money to save money, because you're not treating that stormwater, because it never got into the system anyway.
We've done four or five basins.
Really successful to prepare to a lot of K M Bs, I was surprised how much you kept down the I N I into the city sewers.
Some of the pipes actually encouraged it that day, because they wanted the groundwater to move. Right, the wastewater within the pipe, so either that or just hold, right, but sometimes I was encouraged.
Training swamp areas.
Yeah, it's sewer lines through creeks in town, and sometimes they have big holes in them, right, and so you have cream and water running into. You find a lot of things you start tanning, right?
We have houses built on top of creeks.
So put a pin in this, um, the, uh, RFP will go out, RFP, excuse me, will go out for this, this service fee for long. Jay said, you can see.
Alright.
Any question?
Yeah, any questions?
Is there any, um, thought into in the future, making trucks go back down Park Street or railroad?
Yeah, that was a conversation at the time in design Park Street, that um, it was another. Almost three hundred thousand dollars to add more asphalt, so it can be a truck section, it's not built to handle trucks. And uh, the budget didn't allow that for that particular project, that was pretty much that transportation benefit district funding. Or because the road.
That was their entire year's painting budget.
Yeah, yeah, it took years for the painting budget, so we didn't add more asphalt section to it. Another consideration is the bridge over Goldboro Creek at seven. That uh, those trucks are, that's our bridge, and we don't want to have to replace that in the future because of overloading. So we kept the trucks back on the council identified, that was never identified as a truck route. Um, in our, our current municipal building, was truck routes, uh, how the truck started there, I'm not sure. And it, council never weighed in on the original decision of that.
The brow road in first.
Yeah.
Yeah, so anyway, it's soundness.
Yeah, it destroyed the road.
Yep, so, so SBI changed their entrance, from what I understand, all the trucks used to go in the main gate there.
Now they come in that. Since, since, yeah, main gate on railroad and.
So it was more convenient to, for them to get it down.
Street now.
No street.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Alright, I think we are on new discussion, so.
I'd like to add something to your session, you have mine, I want to talk about maybe uh, weather response, coming over the next few days, we're all aware. There was some forecast for some snow and some weather and, you know, the crews we have working hard on it, and Jake probably speak that. We do have our critical routes map on our website, um, we'll be getting that out there and communication specialists as well in the next day or so. Hopefully you get some more information, seems like it's changing on a regular basis, the, the crews are gearing up for this, getting plows ready, de-icer.
We have wind saved, we're hooking up plows, uh, you know, making, we got gravel delivered already for the sandy. Um, we go up and uh, pick up a salt, um, that we put down on the road, uh, the county, we have a. An ILA with them, uh, we reimburse them for the salt, and so uh, normally what we'll do is uh. Before the event, we get the salt sprayed down on the road. Because what happens is, is when it snows and the cars start packing it down, or it's freezing rain. Um, the salt helps one from sticking, so when our plow comes by, having that salt laying down there. Keeps a little bit of water sort of in there, doesn't freeze, and it comes off the road a lot easier for us. So there's some big benefits to getting that down, um, we're not like Michigan or something where the salt's going down. You know, all with our block, right, then we apply it a few times a year on, on the main routes, so we got that going on, um. And so uh, primary routes are gold, um, when it, it, you know, what forecast people look at. You know, we can get, it's Friday and Saturday combined, maybe ten inches, right, a foot, and um, when the plow goes by, it. Um, a foot, and um, when the plow goes by, it blocks your driveway. If you're on one of those primary routes, you're gonna have a wind roll of snow on your driveway. If we're not cleaning out the individual driveways, we get complaints about that. But we purely don't have staff to go clean out every driveway. Um, so uh the citizens need to go out there with the shovel and dig out the driveway, so if they wanna come in and out, that sort of thing. Um, we uh, we're at the C panels, uh, we do close what roads are, what roads are, that we close the rest of next hour. Yeah.
But, but the main goal of the city is keep the roads, the terror roads clear for ambulances and fire trucks.
To get people to the hospital and.
Yeah, and get the first responders in.
We don't do railroad, because we got those um divots in the road, those reflectors that will pop, will pop them off.
But last year, I spoke to you about that project is downtown, you have buttons on railroad. And council okayed uh to put, take the buttons up.
Yeah.
Then we put down the normal striding, so we can come plow away if the road we needed.
These rubber bits are carbide bits. These rubber bits? Like your ploples on your mow board?
Rubber, yeah, they have rubber over it, so.
Okay.
No steel, they need to be timed, timed to spray.
Yeah, yeah, just, uh, pre-treat, I'm a big, I'm a big fan of uh salt and pre-treat. Um, and not a big, I'm not a big sand fan, but you spend a lot of time cleaning it up and it's in our green. That's on the sidewalks and everything else, so.
That part is, the street sweepers will see them on next week, we have two of them picking up the sand. And then if you get multiple events, it seems like we're chasing sand for a while. So I agree, it does add subtraction control.
Pre-wet the salt, keep it from bouncing into the shoulders and get out there and pre-treat with the liquid.
We use liquid, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I said, yeah.
You did, you did, you also introduced like the one tons with plows, which I thought was a good idea.
Yeah, I got that from my prior job, that uh the younger guys, you know, the new operators. Don't like taking that huge ten-year dump truck out there with a monster plow on it. The city was tying their cars, so we went with the one tons and those have been a big hit. And uh, you know, we still need the bigger ones, I get that, but uh they serve a purpose. There's smaller plows, they can get in and out more and they got the salt on them too, so.
So total plows, dump truck plows, two or three?
Three.
Three in the city.
Yeah, which is a lot for.
We don't always have three operators at the same time.
Okay, I came to the city twice as large and when I took out Oprah's public works director, we had no plows. And we had one twenty-year-old sander.
You were, you don't necessarily all the same.
So that's a, yes, so.
We have two people, right? We have the driver and we have the spotter, yeah, so we don't have, you won't see three plows out all the time.
That's where I was going to, because people are like, you have three plows, I only see one, the other two are parked, everybody drive.
Oh, yeah, yeah, and then uh our guys determine when they need the plow. You might not see out there when it's snowing super hard, right? They try to catch gas, they try to plan out their times a little better, right? So uh, there are, got a lot of this, uh, this city for some reason tends to get. The fall off the Olympics or something, they get more snow here than you do in other cities. Um, cause I lived out in Oakville for a while, you get a lot of snow here than you would in Oakville.
Well, we went for years without significant snow and then we had snow for like three or four consecutive years. Every year for the last, you know, about four, about the last four.
The one event a year, right?
Yeah. It was quiet for a few years, so.
Hopefully people are preparing for that, they're stocking up.
It seemed to be able to be like talking.
Good, they don't need to get out as much, I mean, people to stay off the roads, make it much easier for us to maintain.
At least have people stay home if possible, stock it now, we know something's coming to city or house.
I'm with you with the stay home narrative, our number one revenue generator is sales tax in the city. We need to keep, we need to keep downtown open, right? We need to keep the R P R's open, we need to work to make sure people can get to work, right? I get the stay home stuff, but.
You need to get people there, right?
Downtown people can also walk to the store.
Get those traction things for your shoes, uh, Costco, I don't know if they have some. You know, the crown bottles, they're all rubber things that go on your boots, whatever, I'm not kidding you, it keeps you slipping and turning your knee. I mean, it just takes a split second and all of a sudden you're on the couch with a knee problem, right? So.
I can follow it.
If there's, if there's a need for any delays or closures or anything, I will, we'll communicate through our social media platform, city website as well.
Hey, council have any new items for discussion that I should talk about? Nope, then we will call this meeting at seven thirty-five P M.